Can you hear me better now? Can y'all hear me in the back? Thank you to our telecommunications people, they've been working on this all week. Hopefully we finally got it fixed. I'd like to call on meetings for Tuesday, August twenty-sixth tomorrow. Then please all stand for the invitation. Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Our dear kind, have we fallen into acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our need. We understand and acknowledge that the earth is yours and the fullness thereof, and that you've appointed us as stewards to take care of this county business that you've appointed us to. And we thank you for that. We thank you for everyone who's offered to come to see local government in progress. And we ask that you bless each and every one under the sound of my voice as we go through our meeting. We ask that you help us to understand the vision that is before us and help us to make decisions that are according to your will. Continue to bless our men and women who are serving our country, especially those serving in harm's way. And never forget those who have lost loved ones in combat or otherwise. Those who are still missing in action, if you will, build their families and give them comfort and let them know there's always hope. These are all blessings we thank and ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. A prayer to the citizens to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. In a discussion, if you're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those saying, uh, agenda is approved. We have a motion to approve our minutes from our regular meeting that was held on August twelfth. That was the same as when we properly settled it in a discussion. Hearing now all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, land use matter. Ordinance amendment number twenty-five oh three, Ms. Gruman. And this is second reading of the public hearing.
Helen Griffin for planning staff. Uh, this evening we have O H twenty-five oh three for civic social and, uh, citizen social organizations in the neighborhood commercial zoning district in the county. The applicant is Mr. Gerald Jenkins and it's a requesting that our article three to add ordinance um, in order to allow citizen social organizations like, uh, N C District eight-one-three-four as a conditional use in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Uh, the application was prompted by a desire to use an existing building that's located within the neighborhood commercial zoning district in the county as a sonic lodge. So you may be aware, there is a portion of the county in South Suntzer that is a precursory part of the city in size, shape, and form, but it is in fact the county and it's one of those properties that's in the N C District, um, that prompted this. Um, historically that location had been used for, uh, social organizations, sonic type lodge locations, but it had been subject to discontinuance. When we looked at the ordinance to allow them relocated in that building, we discovered that that the N C District in the county does not permit it. However, in the city it is a conditional use, so that is where this request is coming from. Um, N C District eight-one-three-four, uh, actually covers, uh, uses that range from a variety of things. They're generally civic and social organizations, which are establishments primarily engaged in providing civic and social interests of their members. These establishments, um, in the industry may or may not operate bars, restaurants, but they're generally bars and restaurants for the membership. Um, the stated purpose of the N C District is to meet the commercial and service needs generated by nearby residential development. Those and services normally available in this district are convenience variety. It's also not unreasonable to expect of social organizations such as the sonic lodges or else clubs, those types of book clubs and other things that you see on this particular list, within neighborhoods that are in close proximity to people's homes for evening social activities. Um, the way that we're opposing this zoning or this ordinance test amendment is that everything that you see on this list, with the exception of automobile and motorcycle clubs, we would be adding as a conditional use to the neighborhood commercial zoning district. This is the only district where, um, they're not currently allowed, it is a commercial district. They're allowed in view, uh, they're by right in other districts as well, but we would look at this from a conditional use standpoint. Motorcycle and automobile clubs, we would not be looking at adding to the N C District because they do tend to have an outside impact on neighborhoods simply because of the nature of the club with, um, large numbers of vehicles, large numbers of motorcycles. They have extra noise associated with them that's not similar to somebody coming parking their car going into a meeting because of what the club actually is. So we're looking at adding that to the limited commercial and general commercial zoning district as conditional uses and then a by right use in a like industrial warehouse district. The plan commission did recommend approval of this request. We do think that it's important to have these kinds of uses in proximity where people are. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We already had the quality standards that would progress.
So there's the neighborhood commercial development standards that they're building from scratch, but there's also the general conditional use with your criteria attached to do with whether the site is suitable in terms of size, scale, parking, garbage, lighting, et cetera. So it's a review that's done based on site plan components. Um, but they're very general, do not have specific social organization with you.
So how do you determine clothes? Are they all gonna have to follow one? If I come up, so I gotta hook a hooker club, whatever they call them.
These uses would have to specifically fall under this mix code. So it would be a civic and social paternal organization. It would be a book club. If they start operating like a nightclub, then we cite them that they're operating like a nightclub and then it goes to their enforcement.
Even if they call it a private club.
Our ordinance already defines that private clubs that operate as drinking places aren't as standard as these civic and social organizations.
Can they rent them out? To build them out?
They are not being permitted as event facilities. So the renting of the buildings should not be permitted as part of the use of the site.
So this probably, um, so this, this is something new for the existing, um, center that's already there.
The use for civic and social organizations is allowed in other parts of the county. It's just not allowed in the N C District right now. So this request would be to add that use of the neighborhood commercial zoning district as a conditional use.
Okay, so my next question would be, how does this, um, impact the, um, the existing sonic lodge?
There is not an existing sonic lodge in this particular location because it went like stark for a long period of time and had ownership changes. It just historically had been used as that type of use at one point in the past. So this new location that they want to go into for this particular lodge would go through the history process if this conditional use is adopted as part of your.
Okay, and so my next question would be, okay, because I'm pretty much familiar and in there, you know, with the, um, the sonic lodges that that's over there, um, in the base school area over there, that area. Um, and, um, people were using it as a venue because it had adequate space. They, they used it as, um, uh, a place to have wedding receptions and different things. So, and so that building, you're, you're saying?
I'm not, I'm not sure of the same building to be perfectly honest, but we would be reviewing this use as a lodge meeting location, not as an events facility.
Mr. Chair. In addition to what Ms. McGinnity is raising, there is also, um, a, a American Legion lodge right around the corner from it. As a matter of fact, I'm a member of that lodge and it's right around the corner from the sonic lodge and they're both relatively in the same neighborhood, right across from Bates Middle School.
And, um, yeah, and I'm, I'm not trying to sound adversarial or anything, um, but there is a certain culture that has pretty much, it shouldn't be grandfathered in, in communities. Um, and if, if there's something about this request that is going to end that.
If it's an established location that's already operating that way and has been continuously, this doesn't affect anything that's already in operation. This would, this would be for a newly established location.
But you're saying that the, you know, the former.
I don't know about that particular, like, whether that particular location that I'm talking about that prompted this request wasn't back to the sonic lodge.
Yeah, and maybe it's not been operated, but if it's still a building thing, you know, I think people are still gonna wanna use it.
I know the American Legion is operating between me and.
Right, you know, and, you know, we're gonna have to make, uh, make some type of decision on this and, um, you know, I don't want to do anything that's going to be so restrictive to a community that it changes its, its culture.
Any questions in this room? And now the chair of the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, amendment change, please come to put in the stage and name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, while he's approaching, I just wanted to clarify. What, what kind of lounge can you say that was?
Hoover, Hoover.
Oh, this is a song. He's talking about Hoover, not Hoover, okay. I just need a little clarification, that's all. Just wanted a little clarification. I, I got it, I got it. Yes, sir. Sorry. Thank, thank you, thank you.
State your name for the record, please say aye.
Uh, this is Gerald Jenkins. I'm the Washington Master for this lodge. Um, as, as I said before, this building had been used previously, I'm not sure how many years ago, as a sonic lodge. Uh, but as you all know, one of the things, one of my charters as nations is to place ourselves in communities where we can do the most good. This building, uh, we've, we've invested a considerable amount of funds trying to improve it on the inside. Uh, it is still just a block building, but, uh, it's really not large enough to be a, a host party center or rental place. Uh, maybe if one of our members wanted to use it for a children's birthday party, um, hopefully that would be allowed. Um, but just to, uh, to, uh, house my members, uh, to host either back to school drives for the book community, hot dog, uh, burger giveaways, um, that's our primary intent for this, uh, for this area. Also they head for us so that we can do other, other wars within the community. Um, we had, we had a lodge, uh, many years ago, uh, which is somewhere around, uh, around , uh, on Miracle James, I think. But that was, uh, was taken, uh, in the, the lane, uh, so we lost that and this was the one opportunity that we had. Uh, most of the members have died off. This is, uh, Corinthian is the oldest, um, sonic lodge and the fellow grand lodge. And, uh, we've, we've done our best to keep it afloat, keep it alive, uh, with about nine members, just we're constantly growing now, uh, however, most of our older members in the past time. And, um, with the historical value of this lodge itself, just in name, uh, it would be prudent for us to find some place to house the members. Um, and where it's located, yeah, there's a lot of unsavory things that happen walking down that street. Uh, but I've already been in communication with, with the Suntzer County Police Department that looking at doing some, uh, some activities, uh, to either help host with us or partner with us with some back to school drive, some after school events, what it is. So actually we're just looking at the, within that neighborhood. The, uh, uh, Bates, Bates is one of, one of the schools that we do partner with back to school. So hopefully, uh, they do endorse, you know, approve this position.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none in the public hearing, just closed, closed second reading. If they're moved improperly, second, we got approved, second reading in a discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading is passed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-five, ten thirty-four. Uh, before we have our attorney come in, uh, Mr. Nixon, are you gonna present it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe it's the proclamation?
Yes. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. National emergency preparedness month proclamation.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, it's gonna be presented by our owner, Rob, we, uh, we're on emergency.
Mr. Chairman, if I know which counsel I would like to make a public announcement tonight. Normally I would do this in administrative report, but we call it an item that we have on the agenda tonight, thought it would be appropriate to introduce our new emergency management director, Mr. Rob Liberman. Uh, Rob was the assistant director over in, in us, our emergency management office for the past four years with Ms. Donna Do. Uh, Donna retired last, like, week before last, so Rob is brand new in the position. I think it's just over one week and we officially made the announcement, but we're excited. He's got a great deal of experience, not only, uh, because it's, um, hur- uh, hurricane season, we're always on alert and he's got a great deal of experience working through some previous events and stuff, so we're in good hands in that regard. Also, uh, as part of his responsibility, also works with us on our workers comp and our property and liability insurance privileges as well, so we monitor those activities. So, uh, again, a great resource, we're, we're excited to introduce him tonight and we know that we're in good hands. And with that, because of the topic on the agenda tonight, I was asked Rob to come by and explain a little bit about that. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Rob. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Mr. Nixon, and good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Members of the County Council and Attorney Administration. First, I just want to take a moment, thank Mr. Nixon again, him and Ms. Dennis for their trust and confidence they placed to me to lead this position and I look forward to working with him as well as you all and Mr. Portland, I have to say, in the public county. So thank you so much. As, as you have before you tonight, the proclamation, September is national emergency preparedness month and I'm most getting that we recognize it now as we are basically in the height of hurricane season. So, uh, just to give you a brief overview, this annual campaign search is a reminder to all of us to need to always stay prepared for all types of emergencies and disasters. As we know, the emergencies and disasters, they come in all shapes and sizes and they can come expectedly and unexpectedly. Disasters can cause significant amount of damage and disrupt our everyday lives in so many different ways. And by taking the time to recognize these potential impacts, it's important for all of us to take the necessary steps to minimize the effects of disaster and improve our community resilience. So with that said, I'll give you before basic key points and the highlight for national preparedness month. First is, um, for all of us to make a plan, develop our own emergency plan based upon our needs, include a communication plan, meeting points, and evacuation plan. I encourage you to have discussions with your family, within your workplace, and any organizations that you may be a part of, to what you might do if disaster strikes. Second, I'd encourage you to build a disaster kit and pile a disaster kit with supplies such as food, water, first aid, medications, flashlights, phone chargers, batteries, and blankets, as well as it's important to make sure you have easy access to your important papers and documents. Also, I would encourage you all and citizens to take the time to learn our area, what we're most at risk on. As you all know, we're most prone in Suntzer and have seen in the past damages from hurricanes, floodings, and most recently pandemic damage, so we included in that. Uh, and number four, it could be, and a key point is to take the time to share with others and learn a little bit more about disasters and stay prepared. Our federal partners have a great resource, which is ready dot gov, that can provide a lot more in, in-depth information regarding disaster preparedness. Our proclamation, uh, tonight also, um, highlights an important group that, that is part of the disaster response efforts in South Carolina, and that's the South Carolina State Guard. The State Guard's been a home-standing military organization that dates back to the late sixteen hundreds and has direct ties to Suntzer County with General Thomas Suntzer being one of early leaders. The State Guard is an organization that is, um, Army Military Brigade Division of the South Carolina Military Department. The State Guard offers a variety of services to include search and rescue operations, medical support, legal and engineering assistance, chaplain and council services, directing and distributing of supplies for disaster, and providing military funeral honors for our veterans, just to name a few. I think it's important to remember when disaster strikes, the State Guard will be one of the first to provide quick service to our community to help with safeguarding lives, protecting property, and helping us get back to normal. Their, their mission and work are essential and should not be overlooked. The State Guard is here to serve all of us and part of the proclamation, we thank them for their continued service and recognize them for the sinful work they do. I thank you for your time this evening and thank you for issuing the proclamation. You approve the proclamation. So, yes, we move improperly second reading, that we approve, uh, the proclamation of national emergency preparedness month, the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Proclamation passes. Now, before our attorney speaks, uh, the reason I was hesitating, I just, this ordinance is, uh, the result of a lot of work by Public Works Committee, specifically Mr. Carlton Washington and Chairman Ari Baker. Uh, this is gonna be the first reading, uh, on this change that will allow, uh, Suntzer County to eventually be able to adopt private roads and get them up to speed as far as maintaining this concern. So this has been a long time coming and I wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Washington and Mr. Baker for all their work that they've done and the rest of the council, as well. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a counsel, as a member of the public, the, uh, county council reviewed this document, uh, not just the ordinance, the actual procedures and policies of Suntzer County roads, which would be enacted or approved by this ordinance during the Public Works Committee. After then, um, I will note that there's a hypothetical error in the first where that's called, uh, where the, uh, reference, the county council adopted procedures and policy on the fourteenth of twenty, opposed to the fourth, not twenty twenty-two. Face that. And the rest of it, it's just enacting the document which is attached, which we went over, procedures and policies of Suntzer County roads, there are thirty-two pages in that document, and two pages of the reference specifically, uh, the new procedures for adopting private roads in the county called the, uh, roses. Is there any questions?
Most pleasure, counsel. Move for adoption. We have a motion in the second to adopt ordinance number twenty-five, ten thirty-four in further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ordinance number twenty-five, ten thirty-four passes. Kind of five to two right there. Coming now to, uh, committee reports, Public Works Committee.
Uh, we just had a meeting concerning the private roads, Doug. Carlton, you wanna fill us in, fill the public in or what, what on?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, and before I do that, I, I think it's in order to, um, to thank our entire council for the work that's been, uh, done on this issue, even though there were a couple of may votes. All of us worked together to create a document that we thought would be helpful and safe to the public. So I want to thank every one of these council members up here for the work, um, that they have done on this issue. As you know, this has been a longstanding issue with particularly rural folks who have had some issues over the years with private roads and access, um, for a variety of things, from medicine to emergency services. And I think this council has been forward-thinking and attempting to address this issue. Uh, the, uh, the way the program works will be laid out publicly in the near future. We're still putting the finishing touches on that, but there will be information requested. Folks who will benefit from this will have to do a little work on their end as well, obviously, when you consider the fact that you're transferring a private road into the county system. So, uh, progress has been made. We now have a working document, um, and there will be more to come. Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Please, counsel. Before that, do we have any reports from council members on our meetings?
Mr. Chairman. I had the distinct pleasure of being with Wayman Chapel Amy Church on Sunday afternoon, um, when they unveiled their new sanctuary, um, on Highway two sixty-one. It is a beautiful, um, facility, it was a beautiful ceremony. The, um, the bishop actually appeared and, um, addressed, um, all of the participants and community members that were there. It's unusual, at least in our community these days, to, to build a new facility. So what it suggests to me is that they are really doing the work in the community and that they've developed, um, a base of members that thought it was wise to build a new facility to expand their outreach in the community. So I want to commend them for that. Of course, council did a proclamation acknowledging the work that they've done. So I want to thank council for that and I just want to make sure that, uh, the public understands that they're working, they're doing so effectively, Mr. Chairman.
Any one else?
Um, Mr. Chairman, the advisory board met August fourteenth and, uh, I included in all council members packets, the information from the city and county, uh, litter officers on the charges that they make, collections, trash they picked up. And just one other highlight is, uh, the next community cleanup is October eighteenth and there is also a tire buyback on September twentieth summer, that will be held at Civic Center. And you can take up to four tires, if you find tires on the side of the road or whatever, they'll be two dollars apiece for them. And any more than four, they don't want commercial people coming in and they can find it, two dollars for the tires. So they have to pay anything in the land. That is September twenty-seventh for the tire, tire buyback. And the next cleanup is October eighteenth.
Twenty-twenty. I had twenty-one in my back, like, oh.
A lot of that come over.
I saw you can raise twenty, twenty tires. Go, go, go.
Mr. Chairman, council members and public, um, uh, some of you may have noticed, uh, where, where we're, uh, looking at the new technology upgrades in the room, uh, mostly this is the control chief right here now, Sterling, has some, a, a nice visual screen over here, uh, so, yeah, it's, it's hard to really see, but some of you may notice the new camera that's up in the top of the ceiling over there. I want to recognize three special folks, Terrence and David Darrell. David Darrell worked with County I T, Terrence is with A E V G, uh, the company that's installed all this, he's here tonight monitoring how everything's working. all this, he's here tonight monitoring how everything's working, and I know there's some technical terms about games and all that kind of stuff, I don't know enough about it, talk about it, other than to know he's working through this and trying to make sure everything's working. So, yeah, there's going to be some changes. I will say, Councilman Burr, we can see you clearly, no matter how we sit tonight.
I'm going to ask that.
Yeah, we can see, Johnny on the spot now, no hiding, but yeah, she's got a great visual over here, so we can monitor that. Also has the ability to do some panning in the room as well, so if comments, we can pan to the podium and other areas of the room, but again, Sterling's controlling all of that. So, yeah, it will also help when we publish, on YouTube, we'll have this kind of screen, I guess that's what we're working towards, is to get this visual so it'll be better, and the sound, I think, will be much better, so we've listened to the community, we've listened to the folks and trying to make these changes, but we're excited about changes. We're still working on a couple, I think, little small things, but nothing major, but so if you see Sterling over here mashing a lot of buttons, she's trying to learn how to keep up with this. Thank y'all, thank you for the work and for getting us done on time, we were under the blood and making it between council meetings, so thank y'all, that's all I have to say.
Coming down with the public comment portion of our agenda, citizens may speak for up to three minutes of all comments, the regents, the chairman, this time it's for comments only, no questions, our discussion, any questions that you may have will be answered at the meeting. And now declare the public comment portion of our agenda open. Anyone wishing to speak to council, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. Public comment is now open.
I just wanted to tell y'all, thank y'all very much for what you're doing with communication and with the posting, I did request that, and I was rolling with Tracy, and I really appreciate it. I tell people that if they do have an issue, they can come here, they can speak about it, y'all do listen. That's something I didn't think you did, but you do, and this is more proof of it, so thank you, Mr. McSill, thank you, Mr. McCain, I do appreciate it very much.
Good evening, my name is Gwen Davis, and I just wanted to speak, I read some things about sidewalks for culprits, that's a very needed project, I've lived on that area for about thirty-seven years, and the growth in the area, there's more traffic with the high school students, there's even disabled people, I know two gentlemen wheelchair bound, their mailbox is on the opposite side of the street of where their houses are, so they're trying to cross the street to get to their mailbox. Traffic is pretty busy, that's, I mean, if we could get sidewalks, it would certainly help the entire population, from the young children to the elderly, the disabled, everyone. It would certainly help. I travel that way, I walk that way, and it's dangerous without sidewalks up there.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Burr has asked me to respond to that. This is rarely responding to sidewalk, or any kind of public comment, I wouldn't say that. I think Mr. Harris, Harrison, Harris. Came last time, so I've requested the SUEAS committee to put on next meeting as a potential project, what we'll do, go to a feasibility study right away, potential, if it's even possible, and then find funding sources for it. So, myself and Mr. McCain are on that committee, and I think it's in October, we will vote to start the process. Yes, sir. I was going to let you on that.
Mr. Chairman.
You don't know what you're talking about, either.
Just to follow up on the comment regarding people walking on the roads, it is getting extremely dangerous, polarities, drivers, robbers, feeders, and I mean, it's getting really dangerous. So, I'm happy to announce that we have now entered into an agreement with the Sumter School District, at least in District One, where Hillcrest Middle School will be open to the public on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The track, the original track, will be open for walkers to exercise or do yoga or pilates or boots on the ground, whatever it is that you want to do, from six AM to eight AM on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Our great sheriff has assured us that sheriff's department will be patrolling the area, and of course, there'll be employees around as well. It started last week, and we had a number of walkers out, and I suspected that will increase, so please share this with your friends, your neighbors, your churches, and that's every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from six AM until eight AM. My wife and I do come out occasionally and walk AM up during that time of the morning, but she usually has me performing other chores, but you'll see me from time to time out there exercising as well. Really neat, another neat partnership with the Sumter School District, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, I want to ask you a question. What was that P word you, holiday?
You mean, holiday?
You can tell I don't do that, yes, you can tell I don't do that. Now, if you ask me about some bees or some beans or some corn or some water, I could talk to you like that, but yes, my wife, that's the school name. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, public comment is closed.
I'm sorry, can I say something real quick? No carry for county government. Inkot County Gazette is an online newsletter, you can find it on the Sumter Now section of our website, sumtercountiesc.gov, a lot of useful information, the posts that I put on Facebook, I collect them on that newsletter, Mr. Dean's mission, the litter advisory board, I attended that, you'll see right up in the next Inkot Gazette about that, well, upcoming events, and lastly, just wanted to say that yesterday was my son's fourteenth birthday, so happy birthday, buddy.
You get no joke. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.